All right. We are ready to go. Welcome to our first school board meeting of the year. It doesn't really feel like our first school board meeting. It just is a long continuation of the same school board meeting. So, pledge of allegiance, do we start with that, Mr. Q?
Start again.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need to get my agenda out, I forgot. But, so, do you want me to share the new policy? Is that how we're gonna start this?
Yeah, we do have to start out with that.
So, for all of you guys in the audience, there's a new state policy about community input. What's it called?
Public input.
Public input. And so, the state has dictated that we have to hold 30 minutes of every meeting for public input, whether there's 30 minutes of public input or not. So, we are going to open public input now at 6:02. And you can, any time between now and 6:32, jump in and we will stop our meeting and allow for public input.
Allison, before we do that, we have to adopt.
Oh, we have to adopt the policy first.
Yeah, so, we gotta have some conversation about it if there's anything that's missing. And Heather will be on her way, she'll lead us through this, but I can answer any questions in the meantime. So, when Ms. Murray gets here, we can definitely reference. This is one policy we couldn't bring to the policy committee because of the urgency, because the law passed last Tuesday. So, this RSA is dictating that you have to have that 30 minutes, as Ms. Higgins said, at any public input. It doesn't have to be continu- it does have to be continuous, but you can move on to other agenda items if there's no one there. What it also recommends is that you have a sign-in sheet, so that we know who is here. So, I did print that out for today. So, I have that, so if it does get adopted, we'll have a sign-in sheet. Doesn't mean that if someone's name is not on the sign-in sheet, they can't participate in public input at any time. The board also has the ability to put a maximum out, which we would not recommend, as there's oftentimes that we want to hear from all people from the community if there's a topic that's up. And the other part is, again, I think, you know, making sure that it's the policy we had adopted last year about residents only being part of that conversation, or teachers, or faculty members, or visitors that you brought in for that meeting. So, that's kind of the history on that. And we'll ask Ms. Murray to come on up, because we're talking about the policy right now.
You don't get to sit.
No rest for the weary.
Thank you.
I had a question.
So, I kind of just gave a quick overview of the policy, what came down, that it went into law last Tuesday. The 30 minutes of public input is needed, that's the minimum that we have to do. So, I don't know if there's anything else you want to add to that policy. And I did let them know that we couldn't bring it to policy committee, because it went into law on September 6th.
Right, absolutely. So, it went faster than most of our policies and policy revisions will take, so we did want to bring it forward to you right away. The other thing to keep in mind is that that 30 minutes can really be a board discretion of how you want to make sure that that is included in each board meeting. Some people may just start the clock at the public meeting. If nobody wants to talk at that point in time, the clock continues. If anybody during that 30 minutes, you know, raises their hand and wants to speak at that moment, you would pause your current, your ongoing meeting to be able to allow that to happen. You can also split up that time. It's really up to the board, and there's no reason if what you're doing right now works and you're allowing for those 30 minutes, that you would need to change that, as long as each board meeting, you have a completed time of 30 minutes. Happy to take any questions you might have on that, Letty.
So, can, can we just add to our existing policy BEDH that there will be 30 minutes of public input?
To, instead of the changes that you see in front of you?
Instead of this three-page version, just our one that we already have, add the 30 minutes requirement?
I would want to really look at the current one to make sure that, what we did was, we used the model policy to make sure that we were meeting every piece of that legislation. I would want to look at the current policy to make sure we're not missing other. Let me rephrase. So, the model, or the draft that you have in front of you considers all of the implications of the law. And my recommendation would be to look at that and see if there's anything that you would want to change in there. However, if, since this is the first read tonight, we can go back and we can look at, to make sure that the current policy meets all of those needs. But I wouldn't want to give you the indication tonight that it does. That's why we actually gave you the draft.
No, that's totally fine. There's a lot of stuff in this new one that we don't have in our other one, that are not included in that law. So, that's why, instead of adding a whole bunch of other new things, I thought it might just be easier to add the 30 minutes to what we already have. But, that's just my opinion.
What is not included in the law that's included in this? I guess I haven't read the law itself to know. Do you know, off the top of your head?
I mean, I could just show you the law. It literally just, I mean. Paragraph down at the bottom.
This is the end of the new one, right?
The whole thing is the new, yeah.
Right, these three pages in gray are the new ones.
Yes, the suggested one, and I just.
If I may, Madam Chair, I think that the new one that you have in front of you provides greater transparency to the public on what is required based on the law. If there were things that you felt should be removed from that and it only state what's in the law, I mean, we certainly could go back and remove those. Because what I would want to do is not just add to it, I'd want to make sure that there isn't anything in the current policy that would need to be removed as well because of the new legislation. So, we would certainly want to take the time to do that.
Brian, you have any thoughts?
I share Letty's concern about keeping the policy simpler and shorter. I would like to retain what we have in paragraph one about individuals who have the ability to speak, but I don't know if that conflicts with the underlying law, and I'd have to take some time to look at it, which I have not yet done.
So, can we implement the 30 minutes tonight and approve the law, approve the policy in October?
You can, yeah.
As long as we're following the rule.
If you can adopt the 30 minutes tonight, because that is required by law.
Yep.
Minimum. So, if we do that tonight, then we can have a first read for everybody else.
Yep.
Then you'll have to decide on a policy in our October meeting. But, that has to go in the minutes tonight that you've accepted and that you'll approve 30 minutes of public comment, and then how you'll, how you'll kind of tailor that throughout this meeting tonight.
Okay. So, can we do that now, so that we can accept, so we can start our 30 minutes, and then we can continue the conversation?
Yeah.
Does that?
Want me to make a motion?
Yes, please.
I would like to make a motion that we open public comment at 6:09.
No, 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 that we accept, that we.
Make a motion that we'd have at least a minimum of 30 minutes of public comment in our, in our meeting tonight.
No, 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 it has nothing to do with that, it's just that we all, as a board, agree that we will adopt the 30-minute law. It's not about the time, and then I'll start the time once it's increased.
We already started the time, it doesn't.
We haven't started public comment.
Okay. Do you want me to?
You, just make a motion that we, that we'll adopt 30 minutes.
I move that we adopt a rule to accept at least 30 minutes of public comment time, pending review of policy BEDH.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Public comment is open at 6:09 PM.
Thank you.
So, we're gonna come back to this conversation in just a few minutes, but we're gonna go and start our public comments, public input, so that our clock goes. So, would anybody, does anybody have anything that they would like to share tonight? Okay. So, you do have until 6:39, okay, to come on up, anytime you would like. All right, so, we're gonna then review it in more detail. I abs, I, I like it being shorter and briefer, three pages seems like a lot. I am very adamant that we adopt the changes that we just adopted in March, right? I mean, we spent a lot of time talking about some of those, specifically ensuring that they are either staff or Brentwood residents. Anybody, anything else, besides the fact that we're all gonna read it and compare notes?
The only other.
And then we're gonna listen to Brian.
The only other thing I'd say is that it, a lot of what we already have in here about the three minutes and everything else, is what they have in the much longer version, so.
Heather, do you have a copy of ours, too? You assume?
A copy of what?
Do you have a copy of ours, too?
Yes, yes, yeah, oh, yeah.
So, do we need to do anything else to that?
Nope, you're, you're good to move on, yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So, there's a lot of minutes. So, we'll move on to June 6th meeting minutes, which was our last regular meeting of the year. Any?
We had the meeting at 5:00 instead of 6:00.
Yep, 5:00 PM start.
On the second page, 6:02, there's no vote, there's a motion and a second, but there's no, like, actual all in favor post.
Letty, can you just go on that mic, so I can make the, thank you, sorry.
Sorry. On the second page, 6 dot 2, under the school lunch thing, there's a motion and a second, but there's no record of the vote in the minutes.
Thank you.
I think that's it for that, those minutes.
Well, good.
Go.
So, still on the same minutes, section 5.2, we have general assurances for grants, followed by a dash and nothing. So, I don't know if there should be more there to reflect our discussion.
We just need to have Dr. Higgins signed off on the grants as the board chair.
Okay.
So, we just need to say that it was signed?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, back to section 6.3, I think we can probably delete the second sentence. So, we have star reading was not completed, and the board will not see data on this. And then, Mr. Q discussed the already data, as well as star data for literacy. Note that, note that once star reading data is compiled, you report it out to the board, because that really captures what that second sentence was going to say, so I just. Either. And then, 6.4, capitalize the M in Mr. Q. And there is another, I think there's a the, yeah, the board discussed student-led conferences, this is still 6.4, and report cards, and what this will look like in the next year. So, if we're talking about conferences, numbers should match what these will look like in the next school year.
Megan, Kate? Nope. So, the only other thing that I had was just, like, 6.3 was like, just this sort of run-on sentence, I felt, well, not sentence, but, like, the discussion about the paving project just sort of runs into the data discussion. Was it supposed to be a different bullet? Right, so, like, there's like, I don't know, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven lines that are about data, and that's what the bullet lists at, end-of-year data discussion. And then, the next is discussion was had around paving project. Should that be 6.4? And then, the PD schedule, 6.5? I don't know, it just see, like, it seems like most other things are numbered by topic.
It should be something different.
And it should be something different. And then, I do think that Mr. Butt joined the meeting, like, I guess maybe that happened then, if he came in later and we let him add in, but it seemed like that was public input.
Do we have to have the minutes with these, like, bullet points that tie back to the original agenda?
You don't, no. You just, all you really need in your public minutes is motions that are made and votes. That's all that's required. So, anything else is just what's added, or what the, the board would like to see.
So, this was probably principal's report, right? Or was it the? So, even if it could be like 6.3 A, B, C, I don't know, it just seemed like there was, if you were looking for something, it would get lost.
Sure.
That we were changing topics mid-paragraph. That, that was my only feedback. Oh, wait, no. The last eight, new business noted to have a check-in about summer program at the Y. I think that was after-school program. So, do we have a motion?
Those minutes?
Yes.
I make a motion, we accept the minutes for the 6:06 meeting as amended.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. All right, 6:13. Public minutes, oh, wait.
Public.
Yeah, oh, they're short over here, all right. So, can we do the public and non-public for 6:13 together?
Can.
Okay.
The only thing I had for the public minutes, and it's actually something on the later minutes as well, it doesn't have any, who is there? Like, on the 6:06 minutes, it has the members and administration present, it doesn't have that for this minute. I didn't, I didn't know if that was something that we needed to have or not.
You're not required to have them, who's present at a meeting?
We don't have to say who is there?
No.
But we always do, so let's just add them.
Didn't you just say we have to say who's there?
No, he just said that we have to.
No, you just have to say who made the motion.
Oh, who made the motion, okay.
Yeah, and then what the vote was.
Okay.
Yeah, and not who's in attendance. But if you'd like to, we can add to who's attendance for the 6:13.
Let's just put who's in attendance there.
That was.
Anybody else have for 6:13?
Out of principle.
All right, anybody want to make a motion?
Is this for both of them?
Yeah, for both, 6:13.
Okay.
Did you have anything for the non-public?
No.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the public and non-public minutes from June 13th as amended.
I'll second.
You guys are killing me on the time. Remember, we had a goal of shortening these meetings. All right, everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. The June 23rd meeting minutes. I had no comments on.
I would just add who was in attendance, I guess we don't have to do that, but for consistency.
Yep.
And then, also the non-public ones that time as well?
Yeah, June 23rd, and public and non-public. I didn't have any notes on either of those. All right, who would like to make a motion? Megan, you haven't made one yet.
I'll make a motion to approve the June 23rd meeting minutes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And last.
Yeah.
Yeah, you, yes. Oh, yeah, so Kate should do the second.
Correct. So, Megan made the, Megan made the motion, and.
And Brian made the second.
I will second.
And Kate is abstaining.
Perfect.
So, 4:01. And then, Tuesday, August 9th meeting minutes. I did not, I actually thought you did a great job summarizing.
Thank you.
Anybody have?
Um, yes. On, on 3:02, the section 2, where it says, Mr. Andruski, I'd like to change that to Doctor.
Oh, we should, we should actually put there that you had. You guys, Chris got his doctorate, he defended his dissertation this summer. He is Dr. Andruski.
That was my.
That's a good catch. No, I didn't.
She was last year, but we'll make sure that it's represented.
Oh, yeah, okay.
On paper.
On paper, I changed. And then, sometimes it says Ms. Higgins, and that's how my students refer to me, too, all over the boards, no consistency.
I'll fix it every time I see that one, too.
Okay. All right, anybody want to approve these?
I would like to make a motion that we accept the August 9 minute, draft minutes with amendments. I'll second. As amended.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. So, those goals now will replace the last year's goals on the top.
Once, once, yep.
Yep. All right. Just a note about the goals, so, our September news, so, so really quickly, so that you know some of our new goals, because you're gonna see, for those of you guys who participate regularly, that we have some changes in our agenda. So, every month, we're going to have a data discussion related to one of six focus, program focus areas. And one of our new goals is really to review data, to shape policy and allocate resources to support growth, to support student growth and learning. And then, the second one is increasing community engagement, so we've committed to having a newsletter every month, which we've been trying to do since this board has been in place since March anyways. So, related to that, I have started it, crafting the new, like, a summary of the new goals. It's due this week, but if anybody has any thoughts, I was just gonna put new goals and superintendent search update.
I think that's, makes sense for this month.
Okay. All right. Okay. So, moving on to committee update, safety and security.
We're meeting next week, really?
Week after, end of, end of September.
End of September.
Yeah.
So, no update. Superintendent Search Committee, we have been meeting. Do you want to provide that update? Do you want me to provide that update? Well, you probably have a status update for, so, this is how it's going to work, is that, and then Heather can give you an update on, on dates. So, we have the search committee, right, that is made up of the reps from each board and two reps from the co-op. We met in August, a couple weeks ago.
August 30th.
August 30th. We elected a chair, so I am chairing the superintendent search committee. And we established a timeline, and we established a cert, well, we're working on a community survey, and we established a sort of a process or protocol of how we want to engage people. And so, we have a timeline that is very tight, with a goal of being done by early November. And so, we are going to start with a survey, we are going to start forming discussion groups. So, how it's gonna work, because there's a lot of people who would like to be engaged, is there, there are six identified discussion groups. And so, those discussion groups will form based on representation from every town. So, every discussion group has representation from every town, and they will have sort of an agenda of what their goals are, but they will meet with the superintendent, the candidates, and have questions and answers and discussion with all, any and all candidates. So, those groups are teachers, and so, we are having every, we're not just taking volunteers, but we're asking every union to identify a member who would sit on that, except for the co-op gets two. Second group is paraprofessional group, they will have the same process for this town, for the districts that have a union, the union will, you know, identify somebody, there'll be a different process for those without a paraprofessional union. There's a discussion group for administrators, so the administrators across the district, discussion group for support staff, so anybody who does not fall into the above three categories will, at least one from each school will participate in that. There's gonna be a discussion group for students, so there'll be a CMS discussion group and a high school discussion group, and that will be representative from each town, for each school, two separate groups. And then, there will be a parent community, parent community member discussion group. And so, all of those groups will have time to meet, talk, you know, identify sort of what kind of questions they want to ask, they'll have time to discuss. They will also pick a representative that sits on the final interview committee. So, it will be the people from the board plus one member from each of those six groups. So, in addition to the community discussion group, we're doing a community survey, focus group survey, data collection tool, to get feedback on what people want, as much where people want the district to go in the future as anything else. And so.
That was lovely. Just a little bit more about the discussion groups. We expect through all of those categories, that was listed, that we'll have over 70 people participating in those. So, even though we, we've named six or seven of those groups, within that, you'll see a wide variety of voices at the table. Then, what we expect, just given the most recent middle school survey that we sent out, where we got about 300 responses back, my guess is that we'll have even more than that with the survey, so, think about hundreds of comments back from that survey, and it'll be, I promise that it won't be long. So, but, but the, the information will be really, really important for us, and we'll take both of those pieces of opportunities for feedback to develop what interview questions should be, to really talk about the focus areas that our school community wants, and those kinds of things, in the interview process, not only with the interview team, the initial interview team, but also with the joint board. And, and that will really help guide the direction of what the new superintendent, if selected, will, will move forward to. So, when I, when we say discussion groups, we're really talking about groups of people that are having a discussion. So, as opposed to focus groups where you're just looking for feedback from the participants, or interviews where you're just looking for feedback from the candidate, this is an ability for the candidate and that particular group to have a conversation back and forth about the priorities and experiences and those kinds of things that, that folks are looking for.
And so, the goal of the survey is to go out.
I'm really hoping this week, we did have, in our first round, we had quite a few changes, so we, I might not meet my deadline for tomorrow, but, but we are looking for that. It will go out through traditional channels. We are also hoping, although I'm gonna have to get somebody smarter than me to help me do like a QR code with a flyer that we'll send out to steering committee members that can be put up around the community, so people can scan that, it'll go directly to the survey and those kinds of things. But, it certainly will be available on our website, as well as being sent out through our normal communication chains.
And, could I ask you a question? How are the survey questions being developed?
Like, were they? So, we, Heather presented us with three samples. We actually tried to get that one that you sent, but it was closed and you couldn't see it. I should have gone the second you sent it to me. But, there are, we're trying to keep it very short. There's like two demographic questions, and then four or five other questions. And it's really looking at priorities and characteristics. And so, those types of questions are asked slightly differently. There's some, like, multiple choice rating-y types of things, there's some open answer.
So, we, we looked at, we, I wrote forward three examples, but I looked at about 20 surveys from around the country that have been sent out. A lot of them asked the same questions, so the three that we presented kind of was a culmination of all of those that we looked at. And, but we really wanted to keep it short but meaningful, so that people really felt like they could have the time to, to fill it out. We do ask, one of my favorite questions is, what questions would you ask the superintendent candidate? You know, so we have three options there, that they can just write in questions, it's not a selection, it's just a write-in. We also always would offer an open-ended question at the end, but it really is about those skills and characteristics that folks are looking for.
And I think our open-ended question is really about district priorities, so it's really like, what are the top three things that you would want to see changed? Other questions? I mean, the goal is inclusiveness, like, getting as many voices heard, being representative of as many people as we can.
And it's not just about the candidate, it's about the priorities that folks are seeing that this candidate should have the experience in, and, you know, being able to move our district in, in the, in the way that they see fit.
And they'll meet with all of these discussion groups separately?
All of them? All of them separately, all on the same day or days?
Like, it feels like a lot?
But you know what? If you're interviewing for a big job, it's a big jo, it's a big job to interview, right? It's really, I mean, they're not interviews, but it's, they're aligned to be about a week before the final interview. The final interviews scheduled, what, for November 10th with the joint board?
Correct.
So.
So every candidate, and how is a candidate identified? Is that picked already, like narrowed? Or is it anyone who applies has to go through this whole thing?
So, so part of our job was to ident, to fine-tune the posting that will go out soon? Go ahead.
So the, the job posting will go out, what we call the profile or the job description will go out. We will receive all of those applications back end from the search. We will go through them to make sure they're qualified, meaning that they have either a superintendent certification or are eligible for a superintendent certification. And, you know, there's always a possibility we'll get somebody that will apply that isn't, doesn't have either one of those. And so we would not bring those forward just to save people time with that. But anybody else that applies that has, that meets those two criteria, then we would certainly move them forward to the next step.
Which is seen doing those, all those groups. And if there's like 30 candidates, you want to anticipate, but then?
Well, there's, it's an internal search. And so there's only a defined number of candidates who meet the eligibility criteria.
Well, so, so what we know is we have eight internal candidates that meet, that have superintendent certification. What I don't know until they send me their information is who's eligible. We'd have to do a, a diagnostic search, a diagnostic review of that.
So I guess my que, my question, there's no pre-screen? Like every person who applies unless, is if they're quali, if they meet the check marks of qualification, will go through the whole process?
Yes, I, I think that is the joint board's responsibility to do the, the search committee, correct. I, I will be bringing forward all the names of people who are qualified to the steering committee.
If there are too many, then there might have to be a new step.
And wouldn't that be wonderful? But I don't, I don't anticipate.
We don't. There's six minutes left of public input. Just, okay? Uh-oh. Come on up!
So Liz Faria, I appreciate you saying that since I wasn't here at the beginning. I'm a little bit concerned about the parent slash community member. So if all parents get selected for, you know, one parent from each town, then there would be no community members on the.
That's not how it's going to happen, though.
Okay, so how are you determining between, let's say you have two, three parents and two community members? How are you determining who gets to be chosen?
I think it was going to be at random, right? I think there, it's going to be at random for the people in the town who want that spot. But Liz, there is also a survey, so like everyone will have an opportunity to provide feedback. Anybody who wants to will have an opportunity.
So the survey will be posted or how does that work?
It will go out on like the district website. It will probably not time-wise hit the Brentwood newsletter because the Brentwood newsletter will come out after. Right, like the September's out and the October one is too late. So like we talked about it, like I will put it on like Brentwood, like social media. We are going to put it on the district website.
All bulletin board.
Yeah.
Perhaps Allison, you could put in the Brentwood newsletter that's coming out this time for people to look out for it, that it will be coming out.
The survey, the Brentwood newsletter is already out. Like, that's the thing, the timeline didn't.
The current one won't make it out.
Right, the next deadline is September 15th and it comes out in October. So it will be closed.
And is there an opportunity for, if there's community members who don't feel comfortable using a survey or don't have access to a computer, can they write in, they can write an email or just comment feedback in some other way?
I think my name has to go on all of it.
I, I just, I would encourage as much as possible if there isn't a, the ability to do a computer, if there, you know, those kinds of things. And certainly we'll make every effort to get every community member who wants to provide opinion, their thoughts and opinions. However, it's me, you know, so I just want to make sure that, that we're meeting our timelines and, and doing that. So I don't want to open up that ability for just anybody. I would really want to have that narrow. But if I may, Madam Chair, if you have any suggestions on how we can get this out to community members, I'm all ears.
Something like 75 to 80% of us don't have kids in the system anymore. So it, I think you need to take in consideration more community input than maybe you're planning on.
None of the things that they said were involved, none of the things, none of the ways that they were talking about were going through the school. I think that's the point, that it's just going out into the public. None of it, like you didn't say, and then we're going to send an email to all the parents.
We'll do that.
I'm sure you will.
Yes.
Like, there were also many other.
What I would love to do is I can send you the survey list. You can send it out to anybody you know.
I think that's your job, not my job, but okay, thank you. Just. I, I would love to have it.
The point being that, I mean, maybe we can make it a forwardable thing.
Yeah, that would be great.
Like, you know, someone, like it'll be on social media, so people who are on social media can then forward it or read.
So, so I'm sorry, what social media is it going to be on?
I don't know. I'm not on social media, but the, the, what social media is the school?
So what we talked about, like, so, so, you know, I stay off of Brentwood talks and stuff as a school board member, right? Like, we don't engage as a board, but that we talked about, this is something that we would put on as like a way to reach people. Like, my big thing is, right, is loud and clear, we heard that the May-June announcement, people were really upset that that came out through Seacoast online, right? And me being one of those people. Like, that's not an okay way to be the communication to everybody because that's a paid-for prescription, a subscription for people. So like, we did really talk about how can we get this? I can tell you that of the, that night, like almost the entire conversation was how do we gather as much feedback from every stakeholder as possible? It really was.
So you'd be the May-June announcement that we were looking for a new superintendent?
Yes.
Is that what you mean? Okay.
Right. It didn't come out, right? I mean, we put it in Brent, the Brentwood newsletter, but it didn't come out, in my opinion, the way it should have to all community members. And so we did talk about that this has, we have to do better.
And, and so I would really encourage if you have ideas about ways that you think that, that would, that people that you know might be able to see it, to let us know. Like, if you feel like there are people who are not on Facebook and people who are not going to the library to scan a QR code and people who are not going to get the school's emails or aren't going to think to go to the web, school website. Like, if you have other ways, we'd love to hear them because at the point, our goal is not to limit it, right? We're not trying to just get parent input. We want community input, so we just need to figure out the best way to do that.
It's a really short timeline and I was surprised by that, too, so.
Well, it's a short timeline.
I'm not saying it's a good or bad thing.
You know, if we make a decision that we're not content with this process, we need to give ourselves enough time to, to do another process. So that's, you know, I think that that's the reason that we have a short timeline. Thanks. Anybody else? All right, 6:39 is right now, so public input is closed? All right. Policy.
So we discussed BEDH already. The other policy is the special observance days. And although we have not had a policy committee meeting yet this year, this one is fairly straightforward. It's just that schools should endeavor not to schedule field trips, other special events during religious holidays that aren't necessarily school holidays as a rule.
So, does anybody have any questions about it? No, I'd make a motion.
Yeah, I'm content with a motion, too.
I make a motion that we adopt the new version of policy ACD-R about special observance days for the 2022, 23 school year and the 23, 24 school year.
I'd like to second that?
All in favor?
Aye. That is it.
All right. Board member?
No, but would this be where I'd talk about the committees I'm on?
We should add that.
Okay.
Let, we'll just go to point six. We'll bring, we'll add it up later, but yeah, go ahead. Well, first of all, does anybody have any board member fears?
I'm just going to share from Rich Kane, our director of safety and security. On August 29th, he met here with our first responders, both fire and police. Many of them knew, walked the entire building so they know where classrooms are, how they're labeled, took them through if they needed to come in here in emergency response. So they were here for multiple hours. Great questions. So again, that community engagement in regards to safety is happening. It's something that we're really going to step up. We'll talk more about it because it's happening in all of our schools that our director of facilities is meeting with our first responders, going over how we do different protocol. So that did, did happen and it will continue to happen. And that was a follow-up from a meeting that Principal Q and myself had with both the, the fire chiefs and police chief to talk about school safety, moving forward of how we'd be prepared day one moving here. So we'll, we'll give you continuous updates on that through our different committees, but I did want to share his email to share with the rest of the board.
I had two things that fit here as best as anywhere else because they've just been like conversations I've had. But one is not specifically Swayze-related, Chris, but Brentwood-related. What is the process for the late buses? That's, the, the general issue is the late buses, but like what is, I've heard other districts are starting to get late buses back again. And, you know, Brentwood is a long ways from CMS. Is there any, is it just like done for the year? We're not going to have late buses or is that?
I think it's a discussion for each board, what you want to do and what you're going to, what you want to pay for.
Well, it's not a Brent, it's not really a Swayze thing, but it's a, it's Brentwood parents that I hear talking about it, right? Like, just the fact that like the high school and the CMS do not have.
So those would be great discussions at the co-op meeting.
Okay.
And again, asking for it back in the need and then, you know, the budget, hopefully.
So was it cut from the budget?
I, I think it was driver issues.
Right, last year.
So, and then because of after-school activities were reduced significantly, they didn't run them. But now that they're coming back and there's much more, that definitely.
So people should send correspondences to the co-op board?
Co-op board, yeah.
Or to the co-op board from Brentwood? And then my other question was around scheduling. So this is both a Swayze thing and a district-wide thing. But so on Wednesday is the first cross-country meet for all the fourth and fifth graders from 4:30 to like 5:30, 6-ish in Stratum. And then the fourth, fifth grade open house is Wednesday at 6:00. And so that's a really tight timeline. It would have been awesome for those to not be the same day. But is there like any way that all of the administrators can look at those open houses before they get pushed out? Because there's so much overlap across all of the towns. I mean, I have all, like, those are things parents really want to do. And if I am any example, I have all three of my kids on the same night in three different towns and I'm going to be at Stratum for a cross-country meet anyways. It would be really awesome to like look at that as a district, I think.
It's a great suggestion. I'll bring it back to our senior leadership when we talk with, because oftentimes they do the scheduling over the summer.
Right.
And we don't do it in collaboration.
And it's school-specific and I get that.
Nope, it's a, it's a great suggestion. So we can bring that up. I'll ask Heather and Molly to remind me when we meet with our principals next Tuesday to, to bring that up as an issue going forward.
You know, hi, everybody, by the way. Yeah, and you just saying that, it just, it never struck my mind that it was the same night. But like historically, we've always had K4 and 5 on a Wednesday night.
Right.
And historically, we've always had those meets. So it's like the first time someone has said, hey, maybe just swap them or something like that.
Right.
Like, I've looked back at the calendar, but until you just said it, I didn't really kind of put two and two together, so I'm glad you brought it up.
All right, so anything else? All right. Tell everybody what.
So the first one I'm going to talk about is the SAU Budget Advisory Committee, which I am the Brentwood representative for. Our first meeting is going to be on Thursday. I am going to send you all the draft budget. If you could just let me know if you have any questions about it, that I can ask them at that meeting. Then at, after that meeting, I will let you know what I find out and then we'll do it again. And so there's that. The other committee I'm on is the.
What is it? September what?
Thursday, September, Thursday.
15th.
15th.
Oh, this Thursday, okay.
And you're going to email that to them?
Yes. The other committee I'm on is the Brentwood Budget Committee, which hasn't met yet this fall, but will.
So you don't have a timeline yet?
I don't have a timeline yet, but I should be getting one in the next couple of weeks. That's all.
Okay. And what about, didn't, what, didn't you go on to the, like a healthcare, health insurance?
No, the, well, no, as far as I know, that's not a thing.
Okay.
The other committee I personally am on, not as a school board member, but as a member of the community, is the Communications Committee that is trying to revamp the way that people in town learn about things. And obviously, school stuff would be involved in that once we figure out what that looks like.
All right. And then the last here is the discussion about community engagement events. So this is related to our goal. So Ron, one of the things that we talked about at our August retreat was something that we want to do. But we thought that it would be great for school board members to be available like a half an hour or so before one or two meetings over the course of the year. We, I would really like to do one this fall, but we also would really like to do one right before the budget approval process. And like just invite community members into the school, say at 5:30. And a school board member, or if there are any kids that want to join us and like just give anybody who doesn't ever get a chance to be in the school, a little tour of a classroom or some of the things. So we just thought that that would allow people that wonder what happens here to get a glimpse of the awesomeness that happens here.
Right.
So I don't know if we want to pick a date that, I mean, March is too late. So I think it would have to be February for this budget one, but then I don't know if we want to try like November? Yeah.
I don't know if we, I mean, it may make sense to look at what else is going on in the school, too, you know? If there's other events we don't know about that aren't like public or that in the evening.
But you're talking about half an hour before a board meeting night?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll be here. So I'd be glad to participate or be a part of it in any way.
Yeah. And I mean, I think that through us, we have a few students that could join us, but if we want to, you know, see if there are any other students that would like to come walk around the school and show it off, I think that that would be fine.
We've got some fourth graders.
Yes, we've got a lot of fourth graders to represent, but, and what, first grade, second graders, so. But yeah, so that was our first idea. The newsletter was part of it. But then I think that we were looking for like other ideas. You've seen it on the agenda. I don't know if you had any ideas or you just didn't know what the agenda item was yet. But like, you know, I mean, we did have, I mean, there's the grandparent day. I don't know if that's coming back, but the grandparent day. But that's one piece. Those aren't necessarily community members, but.
Right. Well, it's typically my communication, it almost kind of piggybacks off the conversation about how do we get things out to the community. There is, like, my newsletters get sent out to our, our families and our staff every, every week. But all of those newsletters that you see are on the. But all of those newsletters that you see are on the very top of our website. So it's my really only way to invite the community to read about us, see what we're doing there. So like if I had an interest in what was going on at Swayze School, I think my first move would be to go to that website and see, oh, what's going on? What are they serving for lunch? What activities are going on? So, um, but I think what you're looking for is, uh, some way to have people actually come into our school and participate or see things that are happening. So it'd be a good conversation about, uh, what events, uh, would be most appropriate.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? Like, uh, for example, we have, uh, and this is the first time around for us, we have Junk De Funk coming in, doing artist in residence. All of our fifth graders, uh, that can come and participate in a concert that night will come. And of course, their families will be invited to come. I don't know if that's something we have a conversation about, whether we say, come on by, it's, it should be a, a great time, there's music and, uh, it's, uh, recycling and how we use objects to, um, to make music. I don't know if that's something the board is, uh, thinking would be an appropriate invite for anybody who lives here, or anybody who knows what's happening can come in, so.
I mean, I think that those were like sort of the general things that we were talking about, like is there opportunities to have the kids either sing somewhere in the community, or have community come listen to, or see their art? Or, I, I, I mean, I think we're open to it, I just, um, you know, I think that a little bit of the conversation is just sort of district-wide, sort of how people are feeling about the schools and the pushback and trying to improve that relationship. And part of it is, um, the fact that there's a lot of, uh, new construction happening in Brentwood, that are people who are never gonna have kids in the school, and so how do we make sure that they, um, feel as though the school is a re, is, is something that they're proud of, even though maybe their kids didn't?
Right, no, I, uh, one thing I've, I've made a habit to, if someone calls me from the community about something they wanna donate, something they wanna tell me about, I return those phone calls as quickly as possible and have a conversation with those people. So these are people that I kind of try to build a relationship with, but, um, I'm really open to, uh, doing more of those types of things.
Is it, doesn't somebody go sing?
Yeah, the second graders have traditionally gone to the, uh, the retirement.
Yeah, okay.
Place, so that, you know, and, you know, we have a new music teacher this year, so it might be something I work with her on to continue that tradition.
Yeah, okay. Did you guys have anything else from that conversation?
No, that, that pretty much captures it.
Um, so our, our first, just so that we can kind of throw a date, because I actually would like to put it in the October newsletter, the boards. Uh, so it, what is November 7th, right, is, would be our November meeting? If it's okay with you, I'll just double-check with you that there is nothing else before I put that in the newsletter and commit us to that.
Okay.
And then the February would be February 6th.
That's correct.
So maybe nobody shows up, but.
It's a, it's a.
Trying. An attempt, so.
Right.
Alright. Um, no visitor, anything else for, no, right, no visitors, so Chris, you're up.
Um, Molly, I don't know if you wanna, just anything from the financial update from, uh, SAU?
Yeah, I just noticed I wasn't on the agenda, so that's okay. Um, so I did bring the manifest and the DOE 25 and the MS 25. The DOE 25 goes to exactly who it sounds like, the DOE, and the MS goes to the Department of Revenue. So we did finish exactly how we had reported out in June with a little bit of savings as we closed out all those purchase orders and encumbrances that were unused at the end of the year. Um, Ron and I started the FY '24 budgeting process about 10 minutes, uh, an hour before this meeting started. Um, so we kicked that off today. So in the next few meetings, we'll be discussing the progress with that. Did anyone have any questions?
Dr. Jones, do you need that final number? Ken always wanted that final number. Okay. I'll send you an email. Any questions from Holly? No. Um, I know I can look it up, but will you, you, what is that final, it was 3, 2?
No, 3, 6.
3, 6.
The unassigned fund balance? It is 364, 503, and 14 cents.
Alright, thank you.
In my report, um, just, we need to select two board members for negotiations with our para union. We have a tentative hold on Thursday for a meet and greet, uh, to go over ground rules. It should be a quick meeting, we can either do it in person or Zoom with those two members. And also, we had discussed last year about, um, uh, any para who covered for a teacher getting some type of stipend, so that has been drawn up. Um, something that we can review, and then we can approve for October meeting, and then it can be retroactive to, to compensate for that. So that would be the Thursday meeting, um, but we do need to select two members for who will be doing the negotiation with the para union. Uh, I know we had discussed it at the end of last year's meeting, but we never formally took and, and, um, made a selection of those committee members. Sure, I'll try and speak up, thank you.
Cause I'm loud. So Brian, you had agreed to do that?
I will care on that. I cannot attend a meeting Thursday, however, because I have work obligations Thursday.
And you had?
I'm happy to do it, I also cannot do Thursday, we have like a big fundraising event.
Okay, so if I can send you just the ground rules ahead of time, but we'll try to look at dates, if I can coordinate with the two of you on dates, so that way Heather and I can at least meet with, um, the para union to get dates out there, get it selected. I'll, I'll send you the documents that to review. Again, we, we don't make any formal decisions till the full board is here, but we can bring that back, uh, so you'll have a chance to review it.
Okay, but just for what it's worth, my preference is Wednesdays.
Okay.
Uh, no, Wednesdays is, yeah, I coach Tuesdays and Thursdays after work.
Wednesdays are.
Wednesdays work for you too?
Yep.
And then that can be in the afternoon to, to.
Yep.
Early evening, great, okay.
Just feels like a really bad way to start by being like, two people like can't show up, so is there just like for any Paris? Like, it's not, there's no ill intent, it's not.
Thank you for saying that loud.
Meeting on, we don't, we're not coming.
And I keep Mondays open for this, so to the extent we don't have this, or.
Great.
Going forward.
I appreciate that, and we'll be able to share that with them on, on, uh, Thursday, and we'll look to, what we'll look to do is schedule out three dates to start out with. Uh, hopefully get Wednesdays or Mondays, if that works for you too, Megan.
Yeah.
Um, have you get a chance to look at the, the ground rules, you'll just have to agree to those ground rules, they're, they're very typical to what we've done in the past, uh, then the MOA will bring to the full board.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
You.
You're up.
Great, I'm gonna hold the mic close so I can be heard. Can I be back there? Nice, nice. Um, so, so a lot of things to cover. Um, we had a wonderful, uh, summertime, hope everybody had a great summer. Uh, two days after we closed school is when the paving project started, and I think they did an excellent job. I'm not an expert, but I know it looks fantastic, and I know one of the, one of the goals was to make sure that it was, it was parade-ready by July 3rd, and that deadline happened. So, um, thank you to, um, um, that company, Rusty Facilities People for making that work. Also, a big shout-out to, um, all the individuals that worked in our building over the summertime. We wanna highlight, um, Silvana and Leo specifically for, um, how beautiful the building looked for us as we came back in August. Just comment after comment about, uh, how spectacular it looked. Also, um, for the people who did a lot of professional development over the summertime, we had, uh, so many teachers participating in summer work, which was great. We had our summer program, which was, um, three mornings a, a week for four weeks over the summer, our E S Y camp. So those staff members and families and students that participated, that was great. Um, one of the things that did happen over the summer was the partnership with the YMCA, so we have that up and running, which was great, uh, for before and after-school care. Jess.
Did it fill?
That I don't know, yeah, yep. But, um, they definitely have the staffing available, and, um, we have a great site director in, uh, Jess Amaral, who has worked here before, and is happy to be back and kind of running that before and after-school care, so. Just a quick update about our garden, um, not a lot of water this summer to, uh, do a lot of gardening, but, um, I can't thank Kim, Leo, and family enough for, uh, the work that they did over the summer coming in, and, um, we do want to sustain it and move forward with it. I have two classrooms at, um, two different grade levels that wanna participate, one in kindergarten and one in grade two. So, uh, maybe develop some lessons and also, uh, see what we can't do as far as gathering and understanding where we're at in a fall garden, but then move forward to kind of even increase that capacity in the spring. So I'm glad to see that some teachers are interested in, in maintaining that and working with Kim. So, um, yeah, um, you, you have my, my principal report, which updated a lot of new hires. Um, the summer for me was making sure we have the people that we needed in the building to do the work. So I felt like every morning, 7:30, I'm going in to see who's applied. I actually called people who hadn't even finished applying, just to see if they wanted to come in and talk to me about positions. So you see, you see we have a lot of new para professionals that have started with us. Um, some familiar names in here. Also, uh, Rachel's name is in there, is changing her position towards math intervention, which we're really excited about. Um, our new music teacher, our new special education teacher, and we, um, we had a change over the summer in speech, so we hired, um, a new part-time speech person. So, uh, we were glad to be able to fill all those positions. Um, obviously, we wanted to have a conversation about, uh, a fourth grade position that has opened up at Swayze and a candidate that we hope to have, uh, approved tonight, so we can, uh, so we can move forward with the transition, uh, for that fourth grade classroom. And, uh, Chris, I don't know if we wanna stop now and have that conversation, or we want.
Yeah, that'd be great, and, uh, Ron provided you with a copy of, uh, their resume. Um, again, if there's any questions, I would ask, because it is a single person, that we would halt in, in any questions, we go to non-public, just for, for them. Um, if not, and you're, um, uh, good with the recommendation that we're putting forth tonight, um, we would just need to, to make that at this time. Um, but again, if you have other questions, I would ask that we'd go to non-public to protect their reputation. Ron and his team have interviewed this, so he did have multiple people during the interview process.
That was really my question.
Yeah.
It's not about this candidate, but just about the process.
And other members of, of the fourth grade team did, were part of that process, and, uh, also that this candidate has come forward to the central office and has, has interviewed with Dr. Ryan, and he has given his full recommendation for this, for this candidate.
So I think we have some questions that we wanna go to non-public for. Yeah, okay. If that's okay.
It's perfectly okay.
So we'll go to the end?
Yep.
Okay. Um, okay, so we'll add that over here.
Chris, did you wanna talk a little bit about the playground and, uh, some of the updates and repairs?
Absolutely, thanks Ron for reminding me. So Mr. Lister was on top of the playground, as soon as we knew that the money was there, he worked with the company, uh, got everything ordered, uh, that looked like the initial timeline is we'd get it in, and we'd have that work happening right with the paving project. Unfortunately, everything has, uh, been backward, um, and significantly, so none of the playground work got done that we wanted with the upgrades. Um, Mr. Lister did have Frankie, uh, who is in charge of grounds, come over and to make sure and inspect that it's safe, and any necessary changes that needed to be done or upgraded, uh, that he could do with his team this summer, so that the playground is safe, and that has happened. But we're looking, it won't look like until, uh, springtime that the actual equipment will be here. Doesn't look like the equipment will be here till, um, about winter, um, as we've been checking throughout the, the summer, uh, to make sure it happens. Um, but it, that's, that's the timeline right now, unless it is, it's, uh, sped up. But right now, we're looking at winter of all the products coming in, and then springtime with the new equipment being, uh, installed here at Swayze.
Can I keep going?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are you, are you gonna talk about your numbers at all?
I'm sorry?
About your numbers at all?
Which numbers?
Your enrollment numbers?
I could?
Well, it's just a question, how many, so I wrote myself a note to go look at the June data, but I haven't had a chance to do that. Uh, but it seems to me that there are a lot of new students.
Yeah, we, we registered a few students over the summertime.
Do you know how many?
No, no, I don't have that number for you as far as, uh, new, unexpected, or.
Yeah, like new to Brentwood.
No, no, um, yeah, and we had a, we had a lot last fall and into the winter too, so I don't know if that's a, a new trend, but, um, yeah, I would, I would say, well, kindergarten's challenging because they're all, they're all kinda new. But anywhere from like 10 to 12 students, maybe?
Yeah, I mean, like when last year's fifth grade graduated, they were like the big class, and now they are, they wouldn't have been the big class.
No, right.
Yeah, it's crazy.
Yep.
Alright, it's good.
Yeah, and you know, we, we see, we see the big numbers in, uh, in grade, um, three and four right now, as far as, uh, class size, you know? They're still around 18 per classroom, which is optimal, and part of the board goals, which is to have that, um, that focus on class size, which is great. So, um, every now and then we get lucky and, uh, they don't register for third or fourth grade, it's for like fifth or second. You're like, what grade?
Just so that I, cause Letty just brought it up, so this year's fifth grade stayed the same from fourth to fifth, but there's three new between third and fourth, like, like from that shift, like the fourth grade class has three new, the third grade class has three new, the second grade class has two new, and the first grade class has six new. That is a lot, it's just.
Yeah.
A lot of students, that's awesome. Cool.
So I, I also see on the, uh, principal report, uh, wellness committee, and I know you emailed me about a wellness committee, I think, um, identifying people that would be a part of that conversation, including, you would, uh, you would mention yourself and, uh, another parent.
Yep.
Who'd be interested. Also, would wanna bring in, um, Rebecca Doucette, who is our nurse, uh, Maureen Cooper from the kitchen, myself. Uh, and it's been, it's been a couple of years since we've had like a wellness committee that's met on a regular basis, and usually it's like three meetings a year. So I would love to do something like that in October, it'd find out some availability from all the stakeholders, so we can schedule something in, uh, in October.
Okay. Perfect.
The, the other aspect of, of the board goals is the, the data calendar and, uh, making decisions driven by data. Uh, and, um, Chris and I had a, a few conversations about information that would be helpful for, uh, those decisions, so, uh, and might as well start tonight. We have initial state testing data from May that we can review and have a conversation about. But moving forward, and I don't know if Chris passed this out, or if this is something.
They do have a copy of, of.
So, um, October, so the next meeting, we'll, we'll have some conversations, uh, around special education, maybe provide information about caseload, uh, perhaps kind, the types of services that are happening here and that we're providing for our students. By November, we will have our initial, uh, screening data. We're doing, um, a couple of different screenings for students in ELA and math. Um, all students are using iReady diagnostics for mathematics. For students in kindergarten, first and second grade, we're using a new screener, which is called Acadience, which, uh, provides a lot of information about phonics and, uh, phonological development. development. In grades three through five, we're moving away from STAR and adopting iReady ELA or the iReady reading diagnostic. Our teachers also do found us in Pennell, which is a running record. Listen to a student read, and that's a good way to understand fluency, word count, and you get to actually hear the student read. The other diagnostics are all on the computer. So that's November. December will be facilities, so I'll call upon my friend Rusty over there to come and chat with us to talk a little bit about everything facilities-wide for Swayze. In January, it's a good time to update everybody on our work in SEL. We did adopt the Fly5 SEL curriculum. We're really excited about the work our teachers have done so far over the summer to understand the program. So it'll be a good time for us to update some of the changes that we're seeing with our students. Again, we'll repeat student assessments in February, which come right after those report cards are popping out. Lunch program, presentation on staff and their professional development. Again, talk about special education and then end of the year data. So it's good that we have kind of a strategy going forward about a comprehensive way to look at everything Swayze with some numbers. And last, I guess we could review state testing unless anybody had any questions so far.
The only question, and I know I jumped the gun on the new goals, talking about them at the beginning, but I'm just, I just want to make sure that in my newsletter, like I had used your summary from the August meeting. And some of these are very clear how they map. So Ron, I'm just like referring to like the August 9th summary, meeting minutes, but so special ed clearly here, lunch is clearly here, instruction and assessment is clearly here, facilities and social and emotional. But the other category you listed there, Chris, was behavior and safety.
Sure. We'll embed that in social emotional.
In most, okay.
Facilities will have that. Yeah, we figured there would be embedded throughout. That would be the big one.
Yeah, okay, fine. So if I use these categories, we're good?
Correct. Thank you for that question.
So the data we're looking at is from the New Hampshire SAS assessment, which is given to all students in grades three, four and five every May and June in the areas of ELA and math. And our fifth graders also do a science assessment. The colored sheet that you see kind of breaks down performance distribution. Apologize that the ELA is not in order of grade level, so just make sure that when you're looking at it, that you're not looking three, four or five. It's three, four or five on the summative math assessment, and then the other one is grade five, three, four for some reason. So I apologize for that. But this gives you a breakdown of our students. So the red category is below proficient. Yellow is approaching proficient. Green is proficient. And then the blue category is above proficient. Obviously, every year, we look to not only the grade level, but also the individual students and how they're scoring. To, we have some areas of focus to look at as far as the numbers. The other pages I've given you have given you a seven-year comparison, so some historical data about how we score on this test. Until we break down where we're at with some of the yellow categories, and again, I'll remind you, the yellow category is students that are just below proficient. I don't know how many more questions it would have taken for them to go from that yellow category to green. So it'd be good for us to know, are we on the cusp of proficient? Where was that balance? So obviously, looking at the numbers, we can break down where we'd like to put a little bit more thought, a little more energy, a little bit more focus. Statewide, nationwide, mathematics is always less proficient than students in ELA. So we've done a good job of providing a core math program and curriculum in Ready Math, providing training to our teachers to use that program. But now we're moving even deeper in implementing math instruction with our teachers are going to be participating all year in going to other schools, watching model lessons, working with other classroom teachers at their grade level, having conversations about practice. So it's the teaching of math, implementing it, but also using a program. Last year, we wanted to dedicate all of our time to understanding the materials that we invested in. The board also invested in having an individual work with our students for math intervention. So that's also going to be in place. We've already started having conversations at our PLCs at different grade levels about what the schedule would look like, whether it's a combination of pushing into the classroom to work during math time or doing some pullout during math time. So that's one of the ways that we take a look at this data and decide how we make some changes. I am very happy to see our grade five students in ELA are moving into the middle school with 94% of them.
Sorry, I have a babysitter problem. I just have to...
No, no problem.
Please, Scooch.
All right, good luck.
Might be back.
Good luck, all right. I might still be talking, Megan, you never know. 94% of our students proficient. I mean, that's really unheard of. So, and I've heard from the middle school that we got some great kids over there. We always send some great kids over there. But our ELA scores are looking very strong. And again, you don't see the state scores yet. We're still waiting for those, Chris, I believe, and I don't know that those have come out yet.
No, they'll be released in October. So that's why we chose November to go fully, so you can see a comparison across the state. State's working on the website. They'll actually have a parent portal where parents can go and see the data, compare it to other schools, look at themselves. So that's going to be part of the release. So it is a little bit later than normal being released from the Department of Education. So that's why we can't give you that comprehensive report right now. We just, we don't have it.
So the breakdown is for those, the seven-year comparison for where Swayze's been. Something else to add about the New Hampshire SAS is that the Department of Ed is opening up a parent portal for the New Hampshire SAS. So I want to be part of a webinar this week actually to find out more about that and how we get our parents connected to what that portal is going to be all about, whether it's a combination of understanding what their kids are being asked to do and demonstrate on that test, but also maybe access to historical data for their child based on their state testing. So I'm going to find out more about that and make sure our community understands that New Hampshire SAS parent portal.
Do you guys have questions? I have like so many questions, but I don't know how.
I mean, yes, but... Yes.
When you get these reports back, do they give like specific areas that are lacking for the school? And can you kind of tell me how that then would be tied in either, you know, you see that the fourth graders are missing graphing? Like is that then pulled into the fifth grade curriculum somehow?
Absolutely. That's the point I was trying to make when I was first talking about areas of focus is depending on not only at that grade level, but also for those individual students, taking a look, digging a little deeper. And again, this is one test. Our kids are demonstrating what they know and what they've learned on a daily basis, and we use that information too to guide our instruction. So this is one test. There are others. There's lots of screeners that we provide to kind of make decisions about what we want to do with our kids. So, yeah, we want to take the information we're seeing here. And again, you're just seeing numbers here. You're not seeing the information breaking down by student by student. So that's the work for us as educators when we get together during our PLCs to talk about what do we want to do, what do we want to spend more time in? So we have a lot of great experience in teachers that are up for this, so that's the work we do.
Is this in line with your internal testing, like the iReady stuff? Does this stuff match up to what you're seeing internally with iReady?
Yeah, I'd have to take a look.
Okay.
Yeah, and again, they're very, very different tests.
Sure, just in terms of like proficiency, is it about the same number of kids? Are we seeing that they're more stressed out about this test and so they do worse? Or vice versa, or just, I'd be curious to know.
Yeah, I mean, it's typically in line. I can't save for this particular population based on our spring data, but that's something else that we like to put a comparison to. Like I remember when I see these initial scores, I'll go in and look at individual students, see how they scored, and then I'll be like, that didn't line up with what I typically see from that kiddo. I mean, I kind of specifically remember doing that right away. So kind of see if it was, you know, was it a bad week? How was that going for that student for that particular test session? So there's also things to be learned about, you know, how do we provide information for our kids for practicing in this style of testing? There's modules that we can do, and I know our teachers have done in the past, so we'll continue doing those things so that our kids are familiar with what the test is going to look like and what they're asked to do.
I know just from like an individual student perspective, I have found, I have found that they're aligned, like results from one to the other are not in conflict. As a parent, I don't find that they're in conflict, they are somewhat aligned. Different questions, but like I would just be curious. So there's like a lot of fluctuation back and forth, and like I'm just kind of, I'm trying to ignore the 21, right? Like I'm looking at pre-pandemic still too, right? Like trying to keep the, but there's like a lot of fluctuation like year to year. Is that norm, like do you see that often, like across other schools?
Yeah, well, it's different tests if you look there too, because there was the SBACK. Then they changed it, and they changed how they rated the children based on proficiencies from SBACK to SAS.
Okay.
So that's a factor in it too. You wouldn't see as drastic, you're seeing students go up, taking the same test, and that does drive what Ron was talking about with the professional development and the consistency of a program.
Yep.
And talking about it with other teachers across the district, I think that's had a huge impact to why you've seen test scores in math really go up, because there is a large concentration of professional development and money spent to...
To do that.
To do that, yeah.
And then, so one of our resource investments is the math interventionist, and maybe it's too early, but do you have like a vision about how that's going to look?
Yeah, absolutely. So that person's already been going to our grade level PLCs, talking about building relationship with that grade level, deciding what's going to be a good fit for those students and what they actually need. And we're not just talking about areas of focus being a deficit, also areas of focus for enrichment, so that we have a wide range of support. So kids that can keep moving forward, can keep moving forward. So, yeah, I think we're at a good place. I talked about our teachers going and visiting and observing and working with coaches. This math intervention person will do the same thing too, so they're going to hear the same conversations and get the same lessons.
Okay, Brian, do you guys have questions?
No.
No, I think it's, you know, it's interesting to kind of track the kids across the, you know, what percentage of kids go, you know, and sometimes it seems like they totally drop in a grade and then they come right back up, but that's not consistent year to year, so we can't blame only fourth grade teachers or something. Like, you know, you have to wonder what happened if there was something with the curriculum that year that didn't align up with the, what the questions they were asking or, you know, I totally agree this is only one test, but unfortunately, in our society, there's a benefit to standardized testing. I mean, there's not a benefit, I won't say there's a benefit to standardized testing, but standardized testing becomes a norm for higher education a lot of times. And so there's some value in learning how to standardize tests. But thank you, this is super helpful to be able to see. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I think we're done. Is there anything else?
Just a formal adoption of our new board goals. If you want to just tell everyone those four goals that we worked on and formally adopted, and then I think we are good with the public portion.
So the new board goals are on the last page of the August 9th.
They're the first page of today's.
No. No, they're not. Those are last years. Yeah. So one was to keep students at the center of the decision-making process. Two, review data to shape policy and allocate resources that support student growth and learning. Three, increase community board engagement. I don't know that we necessarily need board in there, although we certainly want to be a part of it, but I don't know if anybody has an opinion. And then work collaboratively with the Brentwood Professional Association to renew their contract. Any comments, feedback, suggestions? What do you think, Ron? Have any? No?
No, I read through it. It looks fantastic. I think it's, like the number one pick is making decisions based on what students need, which is what this board has always done historically for the 10 years that I've worked here, which is, you know, we see what our kids need and then we provide it.
Yep.
I think we do it in a responsible way. And we use all the stakeholders at our school to be part of that conversation about what's important.
All right, anybody want to make a motion to adopt our goals then? And we will be done with the public part before 7:30.
Sorry, there's one more thing.
All right, let's do this first.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the goals as drafted in the previous meeting.
All right, yep.
I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Four, nothing?
Thank you.
All right, what else you got?
Just, we had talked at the retreat about having somebody from the solar company come to talk to us or do an evaluation of the property or something.
We did have that conversation.
Yep.
Is that something that, okay.
So if you give me that directive, I do have a contact that I can reach out to that's right here in Brentwood, get them lined up for one of our future meetings.
We do have this time goal this year though, so let's look at our agenda for the appropriate...
So I can work with Chair Higgins to make sure that that does happen.
So we did a few years ago have a solar panel presentation, but we decided that we did want to have that again. At the time, I think the option had been to give up the entire field, which we were not at all interested in doing, but I think that we think that there are possibly other ideas today. So that was something we wanted to look at again.
Yep.
And we do, for those of you guys who come to meetings regularly, right? We had a lot of like 10:00 PM meetings over the past year, and we have set a goal to be more efficient while still having valuable conversations. So I...
efficient while still having valuable conversations. So I am joking about the 7:30 start. I never dreamed that we might be done with public at 7:30, but it is a goal for us all to have more efficient while still valuable conversations. So with that, we're all done with our public portion of the meeting. So thank you.
I would like to make a motion to go into non-public under RSA 91A colon 3 to B?
B, yep. Thank you.
I will second.
You have a real call.
Roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect. Thank you. We're now in non-public. Thank you, everyone.